Welcome to the May 26th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilmember Ronnie Martin has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Please bow with me. Heavenly Father, we are so thankful for all the many blessings that you put in our lives. We're thankful for the people that are there and we're thankful for the grace that you give us. Father, at this time, we're very mindful of some of the recent tragedy that has occurred in our country and our schools. We're mindful of those suffering outside of these borders in our state or in our country. And we ask that you will be over, watch over them, be with us as we all grow through those pain and tragedies together. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into our consent agenda, I have a couple of items. One, and appreciate Councilman Martin's prayer with what's happened nationally and locally, but we had two students at Providence Christian Academy, one 11-year-old that was killed this past week in a car crash. The young man's name was Cole Johnson and his brother Weston Johnson grandparents were traveling on Dejarnet in 96 and were involved in a head-on collision. And so we want to have his family and the entire community in our prayers. So we'll go with that, but I want to just keep their families in our prayers. Something a little more light, you know, going through COVID, I think all of us saw different departments within our city shine. And I would argue with you that our communications department and City TV3, there was no department that shined as much as they did, keeping our community informed when we were all in our homes. They kept updated on feedings within our school system. And so they had a really big week last week when they won two national awards, the Telly Awards. Big networks like HBO, PBS, ESPN, they're the organizations that win these awards. But John Paget won for his Take 20 show. This is a kids and pre-teen show. And Michael Neville's won for producing our awesome virtual Christmas celebration that we did with our tree lighting. So I want to really just publicly say to our entire team that you don't see them, they're back behind closed doors that produce our city council meetings, but also do so much for our community that we are thankful for you and we are proud for how you represent our city. So congratulations to City TV. I'm sure if you could see them behind the door, they're smiling and taking a bow right now. So, all right, we'll move to your consent agenda. You have seven items on the consent agenda.
So move.
Motion second. Ms. Tucker, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you have the minutes of the April 27th through the May 5th meeting. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you have, under new business, this is our fiscal year '23, we have a public hearing and related ordinances for our budget. Mr. Tyndall.
Turn it over to Aaron, our budget director.
Tonight, we need to hold the public hearing over the FY '23 budget. And then following that, we ask that council consider any changes to the budget and then consider approving the budget on first reading.
I have a question.
Yes, Mayor.
We had talked about providing a holiday to our employees, you know, are we looking into that? Did we crunch some numbers on that?
We did. Let me see if I can, I believe it was a fairly minimal cost, somewhere maybe under $150,000. I'll double check that. If you want to follow back up after the public hearing, I'll have that number for you, if that's okay.
Okay.
And Mayor, I've got some comments, but I'll wait until after the public hearing.
Okay. All right, we'll hold a public hearing on the fiscal year '23 budget. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium. If you're representing a group, you'll have five minutes, otherwise you'll have three. If you'll keep all your questions directed to the city council, we'll get those answered at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider adoption of ordinance 22011 on first reading. Councilman Martin.
Sir, Aaron, could you reiterate for me the certified rate that the budget is based on today, based on the recent property reassessment and the equalization?
Right, well, so we budgeted the property tax revenues just off of the growth that we've seen since last year. So we just budgeted a minimal 3% growth over last year's property tax revenues because we are considering that tax to be equal, well, the revenues to be equal with what we've received on the previous tax rate. We've not yet received the new certified rate. We expect to receive that in the next couple of weeks and we'll bring that ordinance to y'all then. And if there's any significant difference in our budgeted revenues, we'll address it at that point. Based off what we've received on the preliminary assessments from Mr. Mitchell's office and his estimated rate, I think we're right in line with what we budgeted so far, but we're not sure yet with the state, if the state's going to kick anything back yet on that.
And based on that, the new certified rate would be what?
Well, because...
I know you don't know.
It'll, yeah, I'm, we're not sure yet. I mean, I know it's going to be most likely under a dollar based on what feedback we've received from Mr. Mitchell's office, but I don't know yet what the state's going to certify that at. We're estimating somewhere around 95 cents, but it could be a little above or below that.
Yeah. I just wanted to mention this because I thought it was important for us to have the conversation. And so, you know, I know we don't know the certified rate yet, so I'm a little out in front of this conversation. With that being said, we're voting on the budget, which is a little tricky to kind of go through that process. But I do think it is important to just note that, you know, in 19, when we voted on the budget, that was the first time we had raised property taxes in the city of Murfreesboro in 20 years. And I think I went back and looked through some of the emails that I sent, because I know all of us got lots of emails during that period of time, and it was a tough time to have that conversation. I can remember thinking as a newly elected council member, how difficult of a position it was, because, probably not Sean, but it was pretty easy for me to say, hey, I just got here and I feel like I'm paying for the bill, but I didn't eat the food, so to speak, if you will. And that's just my perspective on that. But I do think it is very difficult to approve a budget without knowing what the new certified rate is, just generally speaking. And I say that because everyone is very well aware that their properties have been reassessed. I know a lot of us have gotten calls about that and they're concerned about it. And it gives you a great opportunity to talk to people about the difference between property assessment and actual certified rate and what their bills do, because some may actually pay more in property taxes just based on the reassessment, even if we left, you know, didn't do anything to the certified rate, let it fall based on being revenue neutral. With all that being said, I'm just going to ask the question, and it's okay for it to be rhetorical, if it is not prudent to examine some moderate increase to that rate outside of equalization, based on the fact that it is an assessment year. And when we raised taxes in 2019, it was not an assessment year. And that was a really hard thing to justify. It was a really hard thing to watch us pull from reserves to balance the budget, at least the year before, maybe two years before, as we were doing that, because we were short from a revenue standpoint. Knowing that, you know, we have already had one quarter of negative GDP growth, we're probably much more likely to be headed towards recessionary times than we are prosperous times. The fixed revenue piece that we have as a city, property tax base, is the one thing that we can control. We do not have as much control over sales tax, which is certainly an important part of what we do, and during good economic times is a very large part of what we do. I do have concerns over us just skipping this discussion, knowing, you know, we're having constant discussions about paying employees, about building facilities, about what it costs to operate in the city. And I'm just going to ask the question that, should we not be at least considering some nominal property tax increase to that certified rate, just to keep that fixed revenue source healthy as we move forward, rather than finding ourselves in a situation where we're backed into a corner and we don't have a choice but to raise property taxes? Because that's how I felt the first budget that I voted on. And everybody can be quiet and not say a word, it's totally fine, but I've done, I've done my part. So, I'm done.
I'll just respectfully say no.
Yeah.
But I appreciate you bringing it up.
Yes, sir.
Is the 2.5% that we are proposing for employee increase, is that the best we can do? I noticed that, and I may be wrong, I may have read it wrong, but the county has given 20%. Can you explain that?
Yeah, Madeline, I asked, you beat me the punch. I'd asked Aaron to prepare some numbers, but the 20% of the county passed the safety, I'm not sure what the exact name of the committee is, but it's basically their safety committee, but it's not gone to the full commission, because I think that number is, I want to say it's a $17 million number that the commission's going to have to figure out how to fund that. And, you know, to Ronnie's point, I think that's one of the reasons the council has been really good about not letting our employees get 20% behind, because there's only one way to make that up. But, you know, initially, when we had the discussion on the cost of living increase that we gave back in March at 7%, the number at that time, I think it was 8.7%, was the cost of living number at that time. And when I made that proposal, I had, initially, it was 7.5%, that's what we talked about. So we wanted to keep some on the table to see, I think we had this discussion in March on, see where we are when budget comes along, and then also see where, how much we thought that we were going to put into our fund balance. So I had asked Aaron to give us numbers on what it would be to do another 1.5%. The half a percent had already been sort of budgeted back in March that we didn't use, so it basically is another percent, so it'd be 1.5%. So it would be 2.5% salary adjustment and another 1.5% COLA, which gets to that 8.5. And I don't know that 8.5 even accounts for recessionary numbers right now, but, Mary, and you may can go on to, into more what that number, that number actually is.
A 1.5% COLA would be about $1,150,000 to the operating budget.
And how much are you anticipating that we have through, it's easy for us to take credit for it, but it's y'all's hard work. How much did we save this year from what we budgeted and above what our revenues were?
So far, we're anticipating at least $7 million to be added to fund balance.
Okay. So, Laverne is, I mean, so Madeline, here's the tough part. I was talking to Mary Esther Reed this morning, and, you know, I think the last thing that we want to do is get into a competitive war with our municipalities. And Laverne raises theirs, and Murfreesboro raises theirs, and Smyrna raises theirs. So there's going to have to be some kind of coordination in there, but 1.5%, an additional 1.5% does not put us out of range. It keeps us pretty competitive with what everybody else is doing. So that would be my recommendation.
No, all I was saying is, all I am saying is, while we doing this, let's make sure we do the best for the employees that we can do without hurting ourselves. And when we vote this time, it won't be including that holiday, right? We don't know that yet. We'll know that by the second reading, maybe?
No, the cost of the holiday is about $75,000.
So I guess we need to discuss if we want to give the employees that holiday then, right?
I think part of that conversation we talked about was, where are we? Do we, you know?
So how many days?
Yeah, how many days do they have? Are we up?
Could we switch one out?
Right. Are we changing one or are we just adding one? Is it?
I like to see us adding it instead of switching out, because if we switch out, we really would not be doing anything, in my opinion, for the employees particularly. That's just how I see it.
I'm sorry.
No, I was going to say, were we able to compare to what the county does? I mean, routinely, that's who we typically get com... I know I hear from parents when they have kids who are in a county school system, six and up, and then they still have another child in the city, and they get frustrated when we're on different schedules. But can we check to see what the county does?
Absolutely. I'm not sure what holidays the county offers right now, but we can certainly come back at second reading with a list and a comparison.
Remind me, I'm sorry, I can't remember. Specifically, what holiday were you wanting to?
Good Friday.
Oh, that's right, okay. Thank you.
I had one more adjustment, I don't want to say adjustment, but something to ask staff to look into. We all routinely get emails when we talk about cost of living on retirement, and I think the pension commission and staff, Craig, can you update us on those discussions that y'all have had?
We, a couple, I think it was maybe a couple of years ago...
Last year.
Yeah, last year, okay. Last year, we actually had, our actuarial takes some look at it, in modifying the plan. Let me back up, though. Our plan, our pension plan was written without cost of living increases. It's not unusual. There are a lot of plans out there that don't have built-in cost of living increases in a plan. So I wouldn't say we're out of the ordinary in the least. But the plan was not built that way, and I think that in the past, several years ago, there was one time where there was a cost of living increase, and it was very, the plan had to be modified, it was very specific to apply only to that period of time. And maybe 15 years ago, at that point in time, we didn't have, certainly anywhere near the retirees that we have now. The problem with any type of, well, there's, it's always an issue to go outside of a plan that's built and has a lot of accounting requirements and legal requirements to that, how you administer that plan and how you fund that plan and go forward with it. A pension plan is funded not just on current requirements, but a pension plan also considers what the benefits are going to be over a very long period of time, and then it looks at the amount of assets that the plan has or will have, and you determine whether you have, that plan is fully funded, or you have a plan that's underfunded, from an accounting standpoint. I mean, you can always make up that underfunding on a regular basis as you go forward, and that's what most plans did, most plans, not all plans. And those that didn't got in trouble, and so the accounting profession decided that you needed to do a much better job of accounting for the future. And so, at this point in time, when we account for, planning for the future and funding for that future immediately. So if we were to make an increase on any of our pension plans right now, and made an increase, regardless of what that number is, it's a much, much bigger number, because it adds for a long period of time that increase, and then you have to try and recover that increase immediately as you fund it. For example, we funded, I think our cost, according to our audit last year, is about $11 million into our plan. If we were to increase it a little bit, that number goes up substantially. Even with a small increase to pension benefits now, it's hard to have that number, because it takes a lot of actuarial work, which takes time and costs the city quite a bit of money to do. But I would tell you, when we looked at it before, it was a substantial number. It's a substantial number to fund it now, because we have a lot of retirees, but a much more substantial number to try and make up that future loss, to make sure that our underfunding in the future, from an accounting standpoint, doesn't get any bigger. So it's, it's a, lack of a better term, it's a double whammy. It's more than a double whammy, it's, it's, it comes in a pretty big, healthy number. And so it's very hard to get off of a plan that's been around as long as we have, with as many retirees in it as we have. And retirees don't contribute. It's fully funded by the city. And so it's, it's a substantial hit if we were to alter that plan.
The option that, thought of, and throw this out to the council, we did this for the city employees, or excuse me, for school, was to look at if there was a possibility of giving a one-time, not a ongoing monthly check, but a one-time check to the retiree for, you know, here's a cost of living, but we can't do that through the plan for obvious reasons, but here's how much a one-time check would be. And so $500, I think's the number. I'd ask, what is that total?
For the city retirees, for the active retirees, not the ones that are running out their time, but the ones that are drawing down pension benefits, it's about $180,000.
So those are the, I mean, we really don't, as much as I think we all would like to look at, at something doing into our pension, the more that we get into that, it's extremely hard to do that, if not impossible, because the plan was not designed that way. And so that's, that's another thing for the council to think about.
Yeah, I guess that's another thing that kind of hits a nerve with me too, because I am a retiree and I, I'm going to get the same check until I close my eyes. I mean, no increase, so, and it's rough when you bring in the same amount of money and you go to the grocery store, go to the gas pump, you make a decision, are you going to eat this, are you going to go here because of gas prices? And you did a great analogy, Craig, on, you know, what you just said. The only thing that I wish we could look at, you know, you said that they don't contribute to it, and that's true, but they have contributed all their lives, because some of them have been employees 30-plus years. So they made a great contribution. So that's just something that I personally feel, because I get no increase, no matter how high something goes up. But it's really, it's really something to think about.
Well, many of us, I know, were looking at our 401K statements this past month, and who, you know, the one positive with retiring from the city is you are guaranteed that amount, because a lot of us who aren't on a guaranteed pension...
You don't get that.
That, I don't even want to look at what my statement's going to be over the next couple of months, because it's so bad. But, I mean, and that is a question I asked, how much is our pension down since our last report, based on, what was that number you told me, Aaron?
At the end of April, we were down $10 million compared to the end of March.
So, those are a few things just to throw out to the council.
So can we talk about that at our next workshop, Craig?
Sure. Be happy to.
Thank you. I think the mayor is on a good point. I'd like to make the motion for the 1.5% COLA raise for the employees moving forward. But I think as we move forward, let's have more discussion on, I know Madeline wants to talk about the holiday pay for the employee. I think we need more information on that and seeing what, what the county does. And not to say we've got to do what the county does anyway. We can do what we need to do and what's best for our employees. But I'd like to make the motion for the 1.5% COLA.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion?
There are some additional changes on your desk there too, regarding the police and parks and recreation budgets. I can go into detail on those if you'd like. The total impact is around $135,000, which we're actually just going to reduce our unforeseen contingency expense line by that same amount, so there's no impact to the overall budget.
Okay. Any questions about the changes?
Would you amend your motion to include the item you requested, but then also to add these other changes, please?
Yes. So I'd like to make the motion for the 1.5 COLA and to amend it with the addition of the, is it $135,000?
It's, yes.
Okay, $135,000 added.
So...
Second.
So we have a motion second, Ms. Scales Harris.
So, I'm getting a little, bear with me a second, I'm getting a little confused. When we vote on the budget, we are voting on everything, including the employee increase. But if it's any part of the budget that you don't like, like, I'd like to hear the answer to Mr. Martin's question about the certification before we're voting on it. I mean, this is just me personally. So if I say no, it's not saying no, like for instance, to the employee increase or anything. We're saying yes or no to the entire budget, so there are still some areas in the budget that I'm a little uncomfortable on. But when we vote yes or no, and it's going to be a second reading.
That's right, there'll be a second reading.
But right now, we don't have all our questions answered. But I got you, I just wanted to understand something. Yeah, because I'm definitely for the increase for the employees, but I'm just a little confused on other things. But I understand what you're saying.
Is the certified rate a 30, is there a legal requirement to have the certified rate in by then, by the same time we have to have approved budget?
I'm not aware that there is a legal requirement on the date that the certify, that has to be approved by June 30th, like the operating... like the operating budget does. We, we looked into that quite a bit over the last few weeks to see, just not knowing when we were going to get the certified rate and if that was going to hold up the budget process. And it appears as though, you know, we can go ahead and approve the budget since we're not, the budget did not include a tax rate increase. Staff felt comfortable introducing that budget with just the moderate growth that we've been experiencing the last few years. And then bringing back the certified tax rate ordinance once we get that back from the state. To my knowledge, as long as the assessor has that, you know, the rate that y'all have approved by, I would assume September, when they start printing the tax bills, we should be okay. Now, we would like to have it approved by the end of June so that we are all covered on that. We know where we're at with it. With the question Mr. Martin posed, you know, if y'all want to explore a tax increase, we can certainly do that now or later. The, the budget was presented without a tax increase. So it was a revenue neutral with just moderate growth. And, you know, I'll say that every year, our budgeted property tax number, it's, it's an estimate. It's a budget. We don't know the exact number. We get as much current information as we can from the assessor based on where the total tax roll is projected to fall out. But there are changes that go on from June through October that affect that final number, usually to the good, to, you know, as more growth comes into the city. So typically, our number is a little low that we budgeted compared to where our actuals fall out. Like, I think this year, we budgeted three percent and our actual growth was in the four percent range instead. So that's just food for thought. I'm trying to sway either way, how y'all want to go in that direction.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add that.
I want to say, let's do this real quick. We've got a motion in a second on the floor already on the, on the changes. So if you'll call the roll on that, then we'll, we'll go to other discussion. I don't want to forget that we got it out there.
So this is for the increase on the employees on the floor, right?
And the two changes that we had for Parks and Recreation and for Police. Ms. Tucker, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Okay, now let's move into other discussion on the budget.
From, from a budgeting stand, from, we go to great pains, and obviously you want to be as accurate as you can on the budget. And we're, we're used to having a rate come in around this time. But we are somewhat at the mercy of the state in this case, because I think the county assessor has done all that he can do and has the numbers in. So we're somewhat waiting for it. But because of the way equalization works, they're not necessarily tied together. So at some point, we'll get a certification, we'll have to bring it back, we'll have to adopt it. We can make changes at that point in time. And it would affect the budget. If you decrease it, obviously, we'd have to make cuts in the budget. If you increase it, then, then, you know, we'd have to designate where those would flow or work with additional revenue. And we can do that from a budgeting standpoint. But we're not going to, we're not going to hurt ourselves by moving forward with the budget because of the way the budget's built. Equalization means we kind of stay stable, and that's the way we've budgeted. We've stayed stable. And we can recognize new growth, and we've done that. And we have some preliminary numbers out of the assessor, so we're not taking stabs in the dark. I mean, he has given us numbers with the appropriate caveats, that they're not a hundred percent now until they get to the state. So, so, you know, we feel we have a strong budget based on this. Even though the tax rate will change, we can, we can work with those numbers either way when we do have the numbers finally come in. Coordinating them would be great. Apparently, the state must take another view, or else they're having other difficulties to get it to us in a timely manner this time. So hopefully, that helps as far as going forward with this budget and what we have now. And then having the discussion, you know, the appropriate discussion that you, that you raised, we can do at the time when the certification does come in, and we can do it, take a look at that then.
I just may not be here when we have that conversation, so.
Well, it would be.
We should have.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, I'm hoping we'll have it before we take the budget. A second reading is my hope.
It's possible we could get it any day. He has, the assessor will have to have it by September because that's when the tax bills are going to be printed and go out.
Right. But, I mean, we, we should expect to have it. I would anticipate in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah. It would be really unusual not to have it by then.
And I may not be here either, but.
The next couple of weeks?
I'm talking about the election. You don't ever know how it's going to go. But that's what's so confusing to me when we do budget. We pick it, you know, we kind of pick a little piece out and pick a piece out, and then we are asked to approve the entire budget. Like, right now, we have some major things, and I would like to see, like, what Mr. Martin is talking about. I'd like to know for sure if we're going to do the holiday. So, you know, I'm for the employees getting the increase, but some of the other things, I'm not. But either you for or you're not for the budget. So that's what gets a little nitpicking to me, but anyway.
Go ahead.
The tax rate is, it's a pretty, we, we don't have that number yet. But I think what Ronnie's talking about, you know, when I first got on the council, the tax rate was 242, and then it went down to ninety-four cents. And then it went back up to 128, and now it's going to be back down to ninety-five cents, just estimating. You know, so, I mean, the, Madeline, the discussion's going to be, is it revenue neutral or is it not revenue neutral? And, you know, some, some people, regardless of what that tax rate's going to be, if your property is appraised greater than what the, the mean is, then you're going to be paying more taxes on that difference. So if your property appreciated greater than forty-seven percent, I mean, that, there is an increase. I mean, that's not on us. I mean, we don't, we don't make that decision. But if your property is, is valued higher than what the average is in Murphysboro, then there isn't an increase. Again, that's not on the city council because we don't make that decision. But the overall discussion on the tax rate means for, you know, every penny you raise that tax rate, it brings in X number of dollars. And so, I'm probably one more, Ronnie, to look at collections for this time next year and have that discussion, because that's something that we didn't do on reappraisal years. You know, typically, the county, if you look at the, the information that Mr. Mitchell put out, you know, you have the yellow on the reappraisal year, and then you start seeing where it will go the next year. And just my opinion, you know, we put, over the last three years, we've probably put thirty-five million dollars or so into the general fund. And that, you know, I totally get where you are. We, we used that for a badge of courage for twenty-one years on not doing anything. But I don't remember us ever having as good of a budget as we've had over the last, you know, four or five years. So that's the discussion, Madeline.
Right.
Can I make one?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, I think, and this is just a philosophical thing, so it can just be my philosophical thing. But I think what was so hard for people to understand when we raised taxes before was the, the percentage increase in the tax rate. So, you know, a lot of us took a pounding about that percentage increase. Well, nobody's going to get patted on the back for the percentage decrease in the tax rate, right? So that's different in the actual dollar amount that's paid. But what is really hard, because we all have short memories, is we roll forward twelve months. You have three or four negative quarters of GDP. You have a change in sales tax revenue. The forecast is not what it is. The variable income stream changes. We become more dependent upon the fixed income stream, and then that looks different. And so, a year from now or two years from now, if you say, hey, remember when we didn't raise taxes, when everybody got a forty percent increase, nobody's going to remember that. Nobody's going to give you credit for it. Nobody's going to say, hey, thanks for doing that. Thanks for not raising taxes. And so, my only point is, while you're staring that in the face, it would be a whole lot easier to say, we're going to move two cents, or we're going to move five cents, and we're going to drop whatever the numbers are, twenty-five percent instead of twenty-eight percent or thirty percent. And so, yes, you, you're going to pay another fifty or seventy-five or something. But your property went up on average forty-something percent, so keep your perspective about that. Not doing it now puts you in a really difficult position moving forward if the, if the wind doesn't continue blowing in your sails. And so, that's a philosophical thing. It's, it's okay that I'm the only one that thinks it, but.
I'll have a philosophical rebuttal. How about that? If everybody's hurting because we're in several months, several different quarters of GDP loss, and they're having to tighten their belts, then the government should tighten their belts, too, and start cutting some stuff instead of having to increase taxes to a person that's already had to cut their, cut their budget to afford what they needed to cut. So it's almost like they're smacking twice.
So, I hate to go back and forth with you, but can I just go once, and I won't say anything else?
All right, Rick.
That is true. Well, he's not here, so somebody's got to make up their time.
I was going to be Rick.
I think your name, is it still Rick up there?
I'm still Rick in front of here, yeah.
That is true, and so I understand. But I will say this, when we start talking about what it costs to build a building, and you look at some of the creative things we're doing today to try to get around some of that, I think that's really smart, and I think it's really wise. That doesn't address the fact that we lose people in police and fire. It doesn't address the fact that we have unfilled positions there. It doesn't address the fact that we have a growing school system that will need new facilities. And if you can do that with cash rather than borrowed debt as we're going into an increasing rate environment, that is long-term planning that saves everybody money down the road. And I won't say anything else, no matter what you say.
But maybe you cut back on building and other stuff.
Yes, sir.
While you're going through recessionary period. All right, we can start now. But I have something else to look for next budget year, not for this budget year. We had a lot of discussion at the workshop a couple of months ago. Rick had done a lot of research on comparing fire pay across other cities. We were really, really strong on the lower end, but as you grew the cycle, we got weaker and weaker as far as comparable cities. Going into next year's budget, I would like to look at that mid-range type of pay. Not necessarily, like I said, we were hiring strong, but as we got experience and grew, we got weaker and weaker. I want to look at that other, that mid-range stuff.
Can I make?
We can take a look at it. What, what we did with public safety, what did we do, at eighteen, I think it was? Maybe eighteen, nineteen?
Craig, no, no one remembers in eighteen, there were two reasons that we ended up having to have a revenue increase. We had to build a forty-one million dollar school that, three years before, or two years before, the same school cost twenty million dollars. But then the biggest reason that the, and I'm not going to apologize for this because I think it was the right thing to do in eighteen, but we implemented the public safety plan in 2018 that we did not have at that time. And that was about an additional three point one or three point two million dollars. So, not trying to cut you off, but that's, that's, in eighteen, that's why we did that.
That's why we did that. And we went to a STEP program that has a definitive increase. So there's an increase that's assured as you go each year. Now, we've always gone above that because we've added to it. But there is a definitive increase, and that was set up so that there, that we were keeping. So that, there may be in the midterm, some variance, and we saw that with our study, some variance in the midterm. But then it's made up, you know, later. And the variance isn't significant enough that it's a huge loss or would, would lead to a huge loss of employees. But we'll continue to study it. We'll continue to look at it. Structurally, we may be somewhat different than other departments, who may not have a STEP program in their, in their midterms. But they, at some point in time, you're going to make it up, and it'll be on the upper end. So if people continue to advance and are in departments that are large enough to continue to advance, there is a benefit then to have a STEP program that puts that into place.
Thank you.
I see Chief back there. Chief, I'm not trying to put you on the hot spot, but could I ask you a question, please? So, yeah, he's, that's, used to the heat, is what Sam said.
Yes, sir.
So, we, we've all been approached, especially over the last months or so, that we're losing, you know, in eighteen, one of the reasons that we, we put the pay plan in place, at that time, we had, I think in the year 2017 or early 2018, we had lost forty-some odd police officers. And, you know, we've gotten that now where we're still down. But how are we on, you know, the number I heard today was that we have thirty firefighters that are in process of applying in other organizations in the mid-state. I mean, where are we as a, as a organization on, on our, our team?
Well, I think the pay study that we did showed that we compare very well, especially at entry level. And then what we are working to do is get people to mid-grade faster. And, and we feel like if we can get people to mid-grade faster by doing incentives such as the advanced DMT pay, relief driver pay and other incentives, paramedic pay and other things like that, we're getting that, we're getting that to mid-grade a lot faster. And we, we can get there, raises their salary a lot faster than, and keeps us competitive with other departments because they're getting there a lot faster. And as Mr. Tindall mentioned, when we get to the higher end of the range, we're catching back up again. So we kind of fall behind at mid-grade, catch back up at higher ranges, and that's what we're trying to do through, through those incentives. You know, what council did this past spring with the pay increase, and what council did this past fall for public safety with pay increase, has really helped us a lot, I think. But, you know, Chief Bowlen and I were talking the other day, it's just, this is a completely different job environment than I've ever seen. It is, you know, sometimes I think it doesn't matter what you do pay-wise, people are just going to move jobs. And it's just that kind of an environment that we're in right now, unfortunately. And I just don't know how to, you know, creatively, we try creative things to address it. I know Chief Bowlen and we are doing the same thing, is we're bringing, you know, firefighters and police officers that have training in at additional pay steps. And we're, we're addressing that in fire now, just like they do in police, so where we can bring them in at higher rates and hopefully get them to mid-grade faster in that direction as well when they have experience. We have a little bit more difficulty quantifying experience in fire than they do in law enforcement because of the way their post certifications are done and the variance in way that the Fire Commission has done. But we, we completely are trying to do that, and we do have that slot at mid-grade. We're down about nine slots right now in total. We have five firefighters that just started. So, you know, with retirements and other moves, we will still be down, but it's, that's become the norm. And it's not just the norm for us. It's the norm for Franklin. It's the norm for Nashville. It's the norm for Mount Juliet and every other department around the state, that you're just seeing that much attrition. And part of it is people jumping to other departments, and part of it is people are just completely leaving public safety altogether for other professions.
Okay.
So, so the chief raises a good point. And I want to emphasize this, that if you, if you jump to a department and you go in as a firefighter, and you want to stay a firefighter, and stay a firefighter your entire career with no promotional advancement, either because it's a small department and they don't have the opportunities, unlike our department, where we're continuing to grow and we're a larger department, and where we want to encourage advancement by getting additional training to become a driver, become a paramedic. Those, so if you take a career progression and use those other positions, which we need and we want to encourage people to do, then we're far and above what a, just a straight-line comparison firefighter across the board, where you will dip in the middle and come back. We want people not to dip in the middle. We want them to get the additional training, get the advancement, move on. And then they're far above what they would be if they were just a straight firefighter in a much smaller department.
Yeah, I completely agree. And, and our, and our thought process is, we don't want to hire firefighters that just want to be a firefighter their entire career. We want to hire firefighters that want to advance to that driver engineer level, to captain level, and on up into the battalion chief level, because they seem to be better employees than employees that want to advance and do more.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have the fiscal year '23 budget? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
And by the second reading, some of these other things may be answered. Okay, I got you.
Ms. Tucker, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Gels Harris?
No.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Shacklet?
Aye.
Mr. Wade?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Can I add one thing? Well, one, thank you to the department heads and team that are all out there. Thank you for what y'all do. Y'all, y'all do the heavy lifting on this. In, in discussion with Mayor Reed today, who by far is my favorite mayor in Rutherford County, she had the suggestion, suggestion, and they do this in Smyrna, but they get their employees. I've not seen it in a while. I'm sure Randolph, we, we may still do it. But, you know, we're talking about salary right now, and that's the only thing that we're talking about. But there's a lot of benefits that come with the city that are not just salary. Our, you know, the pension that we match, our health care that we match, sick and vacation days and comp time that we match. But everyone, every Smyrna employee gets a, a sheet every year with the increase that the council has made. And they look at that and they see, here's what your total package is. here's what your total package is, not just what you are getting paid in a salary. And, and she just said it's really beneficial that all of us and, and our employees see every year, here's what that total package is.
Yeah, we, we do do that, don't we?
We have a similar letter, I don't know, I, I can't remember exactly if it has vacation and sick included, but we have a total compensation, I think that's also-
You're right, we do something similar to that, but not all the details that you mentioned, it's a benefit statement that lays out the, the comp, some of the coverages they have, but not as detailed as you mentioned, Madeline.
I think it'd be important, I know we have more employees than Smyrna, but I think it'd be important if we could really show, and, and that really is more something that the, the department head sits down and gives that to their, their employees, and, and not trying to put more work, but it'd be good for us to be able to see what that number is, and I couldn't tell you what our total package is, on, on what the total benefits are above what that compensation is, is it 30 percent, is it 40 percent that we can add to that number? I mean, what is that, that total number that we, we can look at? So, something maybe to talk about before second reading, and, and come up with a plan on how we, how we do that.
I can do that.
Yeah, we can do that, we can add it to our letters, I think generally we use about four, 40 percent.
We budget between 40 and 49 percent for benefits when a new position is requested, so.
As a council member, I know, based on our extensive compensation package we have, that when I, when I retire, I'm going to get $9 a month, is what my total is, so, thank you. All right, we'll move into land use matter, you have planning commission recommendations to schedule public hearings. Mr. Blomley.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, and members of council, we have three public hearings to schedule, we are recommending that item A be added to the public hearings that we already have scheduled on June the 23rd, and items B and C be scheduled for July the 21st. Be happy to answer any questions.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, and council members, if y'all are okay, I think it's good, that we're all a family, we're going to excuse Councilman Wade, his son Ben turns, or turned 16 today, so he has a birthday celebration that you don't want to be late for, so.
Thank you, guys.
Please let him know we, we wish him a happy birthday. All right, you have the American Rescue Plan Act Financial Consultant Agreement.
Yes, y'all have a consulting agreement for consideration tonight with UHY advisors to provide grant management and administrative services for the city's ARPA funds. The city issued an RFCSP for these services in April, and members of our internal ARPA team evaluated the proposals and interviewed the top two firms. UHY was selected based on their overall project approach, their experience working with other cities across the country, and their team's background and experience. Their costs will be billed on an hourly basis with an estimated annual cost of $80,000 per year, which will be funded from our ARPA proceeds. So we recommend approval of these services pending legal approval of the contract.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you have a professional services contract for St. Andrews Drive, Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We've requested and received a proposal from Wiser Consultants for the preliminary and final design to widen St. Andrews Drive from New Salem Highway to Veterans Parkway. This area has seen a steady growth in the last several years with development, and it was included in the 2040 major thoroughfare plan as a committed project. Wiser's consultants proposed fees is estimated at $391,324, and it was included in the FYI22 CIP budget. With that, and it, might add, it also includes two new signal locations in this area, both at St. Andrews and Veterans Parkway, and also Armstrong Valley Road and Veterans Parkway. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. Chris, thank you for Armstrong, Armstrong Valley and Veterans Parkway, we've all gotten a lot of emails about accidents at that, that intersection, so, thank you very much for working on that.
Yes, sir.
It's been needed for a long time, I'm open for approval. Motion is second. Ms. Tucker, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you have the purchase of a public safety network equipment. Mr. Terry.
Good evening, Mayor, council, tonight before you, we have-
Jim Kerr, you weren't dismissed, man, you, you get to sit here like, you get to, I said, you get to sit here like every other department, I'm just kidding, yeah. Mr. Terry.
Yes, sir. We're asking for approval to enter, enter into a purchase agreement with Waypoint Communications for networking equipment. This is for our outlying buildings, fire stations, special ops, tower sites. This equipment was put in place in 2010, 2011. We've received notification from Dale that, that it is approaching into life, and we will no longer be able to renew our extended warranties on this equipment. We have money budgeted for this in our public safety IT budget, approximately $162,000, and we just request approval to move forward with this. And also in the quote, they somehow re-quoted computers that you had already approved, so just so you know, they've been purchased and installed. So, that extra quote in there is not valid, but the quote for the networking equipment is.
No for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Tucker, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Terry. All right, we're having an amendment to a radio system maintenance agreement.
Yes, sir. This, we are asking for an amendment to our radio system maintenance agreement with Motorola. In this year's fiscal budget, we had asked for an additional personnel to be a radio system manager. We have had a discussion with Rutherford County, as they are partner on the radio system, Motorola gave us a proposal to provide a field service tech to split between the city and the county. The contracted position is actually less than what the funded position would be long-term, being able to not have to worry about the benefit package. So, looking at, looking at the cost of the FSO, and the fact that we get a discount off of our 10-year maintenance agreement, we felt like this was a more efficient manner of providing that service. So we would ask approval to enter into the contract with Motorola to provide that employee. Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have a purchase of, thank you, Mr. Terry, purchase of administration building for Murfreesboro Water Resources Department. Mr. Gore.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. What we're asking for your approval on is a, approval of a purchase agreement with Wendell Mandrell, Linda Mandrell, and Jeffrey Collins. I've put a picture here of the, of the property address, it's 316 Robert Rose Drive, just a few facts on the purchase. It's two, two-story buildings, the total square footage is almost, it's what, 19,500 square feet. We had programmed in about 12,500 square feet when we were looking at building a new facility, so we're getting about a 60 percent increase in floor space. The original list price for this property was six and a quarter million, Gary Whitaker and Craig got the price down to about 5.4 million, which that equates to about $277 per square foot, again versus the $350 square foot that we thought a new facility. So, we're getting about 60 percent more square footage for about 25 percent discount, so we feel like it's, it's, it's a good deal. So, we are going to go ahead and assume about six and a quarter million for final, there's going to be furniture fixtures and equipment that we're going to have to do. I did show a little drive-through, I don't know if this is, we talked more about maybe doing an underground pneumatic system with a virtual teller versus an actual drive-through, so I don't, I don't think we're going to necessarily do this. The contract does give us a 90-day due diligence period where we can go in and assess the HVAC, roofing, electrical, other systems in the building to find out if there's a potential showstopper, we don't necessarily think so, but we do have that 90-day clause. So be happy to answer any more questions if you have them.
I'll just make a general comment, I mean, I think it's really prudent use of resources to do what you're doing, and obviously it's extremely expensive to build anything new, and, and we'll be forced into that in certain situations, but, I mean, I think it's really, really wise when we can make a different decision to make a different decision, so good work to everybody involved.
I agree.
I agree with you, that's-
Don't agree with me, Sean, it makes me nervous.
And, and the most important thing is, it means we do get to vacate our existing building pretty quickly, so that some other things may happen around Broad and Vine.
Darren, what started this many years ago, people, you know, make question why we're doing something like this, but the building you're in right now is 8,000 square feet, if I remember, it was built in 1950?
No, well, that's the old city hall, our, our building was in like 76. It was free of charge, by the way, it was built by a grant, so that building didn't cost the city anything.
But we, we got a quote just to upgrade the customer service area and the, to harden that and make it more secure, and the quote, at that time, it was 1.000-some-odd million.
Right.
And, and that was determined that that was worth, that was more than what the building was worth.
Right.
And, and so, it, it's, I think it's prudent as well. All right, we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, man, I was thinking, Ronnie, y'all two could make the motion to get-
It was a perfect opportunity.
Yeah. We have a motion is second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you have, thank you, Mr. Gore. You have some beer permits, or one beer permit in front of you, is everything in order, Ms. Tucker?
Yes, it's one permit for a restaurant at 1935 South Church Street with an ownership and name change, they're pending their building and code inspections, but otherwise, everything else is in line.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any statements to be paid?
No.
I don't see any boarding commission appointments. We have, under other business from staff, we have O and M vehicle purchase.
Yes, sir, thank you again, Mayor. This is just something that came to staff's attention, again, this is a service vehicle to replace an existing one. We, we have a state contract with Wilson County Motors at 83,000, we did just budget 82,000, but Ford of Murfreesboro is not taking vehicle orders until the fall, and Wilson County just said that they're, this, they're placing their last order tomorrow, and their next order's not going to be until September of 2023. Apparently, there's only like 11,000 of these orders that are going to be accepted, that Wilson County, or the, I guess, the Chevrolet dealers are going to, or the Chevrolet manufacturers are only going to fulfill 11,000 orders nationwide. And so, the last service truck we ordered in November of last year, they just started manufacturing that last Friday. So, this is an opportunity, again, to get this order in and get this truck in, just giving a little background there to kind of show you the supply chain issues that we're dealing with, so everything's, everything's getting longer lead time, and, and we're just trying to get this, in this last order, so we would ask for your approval.
So we did try to purchase locally?
We did.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
There we go. Motion is second. Ms. Tucker, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.